Chair Alcorn. Vice Chair Marib Steele.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Field. Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Honi. Commissioner Ritter.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
With Commissioner Field absent, Commissioner Smith moves into a voting position. Chair, we have quorum.
Please call the Pledge of Allegiance. If no changes to the agenda is, the agenda is approved? Okay, I need a second.
You call for a motion in a second.
I second.
For the agenda or the minutes?
The minutes.
Okay.
Yes. Turn your mic on and then read the motion.
I move to approve, based on the clerk's certification, the December 16th, 2024 regular meeting minutes of the Littleton Historical Preservation Commission. I second.
All in favor?
Now you have to do the vote.
Oh, God.
Close it. It is five in favor, the motion carries.
If you wish to address the board under the public comments, please sign in on the public comments. The speaker, the public speaker from before the call to order for the meeting, sorry. Pause with me. Is an opportunity to express the opinions regarding issues that are not part of the public hearing tonight's agenda. Separate opportunity will be provided for comments for any public hearing. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We expect the comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. The board is not authorized under the Colorado Open Meeting Law to discuss comments or take action at this meeting on any issue raised during public comments in tonight's agenda. Pam?
Hi, Historical Preservation Commission. So I'm Pam Chadburn, I have a block and half from here, and I just want to talk about the position of historical preservation in the City of Littleton's management approach. It's in the wrong place. Historical preservation is one of the things that needs to be considered first in a plan, not at the end. Yet, I've gone to the city council retreats for a couple of years in which the city manager has asked council to actually move historical preservation tasks to the bottom of the list, to do them much later. And now I'm really, really worried. With two years of this kind of delay, I think historical preservation in Littleton is in huge danger. It can't be delayed. It, it has to be an integral part of the plan. You know, I was here when the comprehensive plan was made, so I think at least one of you was here, and you should recall, and everyone else can see it on the record, the city promised that within a year of the passage of the comprehensive plan, the historic preservation plan would be added. You know what? It's five years later and counting, and it has not been added. There is no historical preservation plan for the city. So what is the consequence of this? For me, it's the loss of the mid-century modern assets. These are middle-class assets, and middle-class assets are almost always lost. That makes them even more valuable because they don't exist anywhere else. And to me, Littleton's appeal is this middle-class appeal. So the middle-class mid-century modern, not just the commercial of Littleton Boulevard, but also the residential around it, need to be in our plan now, and they're nowhere on the horizon. In fact, our community development department has a Littleton Boulevard subarea plan, which doesn't include, to my knowledge, any public inclusion or, or any public opportunity to advocate for historic preservation. Our city's management is broken in terms of integrating historic preservation into its appropriate priority in its planning process. Now, I suspect you've been told, and I'm going to say the attorneys have moved their training to you, out of sight of the public for the past three years, which is wrong. We should know what you folks are being told. But I suspect you're being told not to make any advocacy statements because it might be held against the city later. I think there is nuance there that you have not been provided with, and it's going to hurt all of us in terms of not having your input into the necessity to get historic preservation planning into the plan now. We need it now. I, I think the mid-century modern assets of the city, and specifically Littleton Boulevard, are in immediate danger. Thank you.
General Business?
Ask if there's anybody else that wishes to speak, then General Business.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? General Business?
None.
Public Hearing? Okay. HPC Resolution 01-2025, conditional approval of certificate of appropriateness for the building located at 2659 West Main Street. Staff presents.
Good evening, everyone. And I'll just wait till the screen switches over to the present. Great. Okay. So the first COA for tonight is 2659 West Main Street, looking at exterior modifications to the roof and east elevation. This is specifically Bradford Autobody downtown, kind of on the west side of downtown, just past South Curtis Street. That top picture is the front as it currently is, and then that kind of bottom right picture is part of a roof collapse and a wall also start to collapse situation that kind of preempted a lot of the reason for the COA. So just kind of quick on the process, the Historic Preservation Commission is here to review exterior modifications to historic buildings. This does involve public hearing process, which we did notice appropriately, and then the Historic Preservation Commission has the final determination of approval, approval with conditions or denial. So we'll go over the proposed changes, the criteria, and then staff recommendation. As I mentioned, this was a result of a roof collapse, and so during a roof repair, the roof collapsed, this is over the summer, and so a portion of the roof, as well as exterior wall, was allowed to be demolished due to life safety concerns due to the damage. So they are proposing to replace the exterior siding and garage doors. The siding is proposed to be red metal. The profile is slightly different than what was there. That metal siding that was on the building is no longer manufactured due to the age of it, and so they're proposing a same color and a profile that is currently on the rear addition to the building. So it is a profile that is currently on the building. The biggest change is the installation of a new prefabricated automobile paint booth. Needed to switch that. They are proposing to use a prefabricated booth. The height increase is due to having to meet current EPA federal regulations and building code regulations, and so there will be an increase of height of about six feet to 19 foot nine inches, and an exterior wall shift out, so to the east of 1.25 feet. And then for the rooftop equipment, they will be reinstalling much of the equipment that was previously there. There will be two new pieces. Those are again required to meet current building code and regulations. So here is the site plan, and one thing to note with this is it kind of shows the gray paint booth there on the east side of the building, about two-thirds of the way back. It shows the minor extension. The rest of the building will be staying in line where it previously was, and it is not, does not extend past the kind of front facade of the building. You'll see that kind of southeast corner of it there does extend out past the rest of the bays. Oh, and one other thing I did want to note is the, it's about 43 feet back from the front of the facade. So the elevations, because, oops, sorry, because you don't have that perspective, it does look much closer, but I wanted to kind of note that this is relatively set back from the front of the building. And so this is kind of the elevation view of it. That's the increase in the height of the paint booth. The two pieces of equipment that are being proposed are the one that's kind of in the middle, the kind of curved one, and then the one that is on the proposed paint booth. And here it is in elevation. As you can see, the equipment itself is also set back from the front of the building. One of the kind of staff recommendations actually was to not provide a large screening for this equipment. Much of the equipment was previously there. And putting kind of a parapet screening wall closer to the front of the building would have greatly affected the mass and kind of scale of the building. It is a relatively kind of low, one single-story building, and so kind of pulling that up closer to the front of the building would have had a greater impact on the historic integrity of the building. God, stop hitting this tonight. And so here are kind of some site elevation in terms of understanding kind of how much of an impact the addition and the equipment will have. As you can see, it's taking a similar view as to what was shown from the street view. And so they will be visible, but it is not quite as intense or aggressive as the elevations make it seem. So just making that clear. And here are just some 3D renderings of kind of what it'll look like on site. So we did find that it met majority of the criteria. There's one note in terms of the garage doors were noted on the plan set verbally as being replaced in kind. The drawings don't quite reflect that, so there is a condition I will discuss that kind of just clarifies that and makes sure that it is an in-kind replacement. And once that is kind of shown and clarified, they would be meeting the standards for downtown and the approval for the COA. One other thing to note, this property is considered legal non-conforming. Our legal non-conforming code does allow for some expansions to occur, and this does meet the criteria for a minor expansion, and so it does meet that portion of the code as well. So as I mentioned, staff is recommending approval with the condition that the existing elevations need to accurately depict the, what was previously there, which is a garage door with six fixed lights, three over three, and just making sure that it's not only verbally written on the plan, but also visually shown correctly. And then a recommendation to paint the mechanical equipment a color that kind of reduces their appearance, likely that red color, especially with the kind of backing wall, that color probably makes the most sense. So that is where we're at right now.
Okay. Questions?
Applicant.
Applicant presents first. You guys present.
Hi, I'm Charlie Jones. I'm with Earth Saving Solutions, contractor for, Chris Hawk, performing for Bradford Autobody. Sarah, thank you so much for all of what you guys have done. Part of the, addressed just a couple of the questions that she has raised, and we can show a little bit of the detail that I think we do meet the standard that she was asking for, so it sounds like we're in a line. Hopefully you all feel the same. We've worked diligently in trying to come up with the best solution to making this look as it was before. Again, they talked about the garage doors, and it does depict on here the glass that is on here. So I'm going to pull up one of the pictures that I think has created potentially some confusion, that this is what is inside of the entire set of plans, and it shows this small window, which is just their spec sheet. What we actually are doing is performing in this here, where they do have the glass that matches what the front garage bay. So we will also make sure that you have that appropriate spec, but we apologize if that created any confusion to planning, as well as historical. The major issue is that that's what they provide for their spec sheet. So I think hopefully that addresses that issue. The other item that I think that, Sarah, you had brought up is the paneling, and so we did bring you a sample so you could see very clearly what that paneling looks like. So this was the option, which is also, just as a note, on the other side of the building, when there was damage done from a previous, it sounds like when they rebuilt the building that was next to it, somebody had run into their siding. So this was what was put onto that side of the building, and so we figured that actually met more of an appropriate match to what the rest of the building. So if you all wanted to see that, but color-wise, it's a perfect match to what's there color-wise. It is just a different variation, but like I said, it does match with what is on the rest of the building. So I'm more than happy to go over any other questions, but from our standpoint, it sounds like we're in a line. Hopefully you all have, you know, also feel the same. I think this is simply a matter for Bradford Autobody of just getting them back to business as usual, so we would hope to expedite this as quickly as possible to help them get back and running their, their business as well. So any questions? I would be more than happy. Mickey, if you wanted to come and urge the urgency of what your needs are, I think would be very well needed to hear.
Thank you all. Thank you all, and appreciate letting us come and talk to you, and seeing the pictures that was put together, because it clearly gives you a good idea what it was before and how it's coming along now, because it's, it's really coming along well. It should be just, just about perfect. That's, I don't know what else I can say other than that.
So I think that's as far as we're concerned, we're just asking for approvals, you know, to help us expedite and get it back into permitting, so we can be moving them back along and get them completed. So thank you for your time this evening.
Any questions, guys? Yeah, go ahead.
I would just like it noted for the record that I did visit the site today. Walked around and saw what, you know, what they were doing and reviewed the existing, the drawings that were presented. Seems like a simple rebuild of damaged areas with similar materials. So I didn't see any issues at all.
I've got a, a couple of questions, if I could, just to, for my own clarification. So the, this, thank you, so this question is for you. Sorry, I feel like the mic isn't picking me up. For the siding, so the, the color is an identical match, you said, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So I understand that there's already that siding on the west side of the building, right? So for, for the siding that we're approving tonight, in terms of width, is it pretty much the same width that the old siding?
It's pretty close. It's not identical, but again, I remind you that this is down the alleyway.
Sure.
So it is, you know, certainly.
Okay, yeah, just, just, I want, I want to be sure that I understand what, what we're approving. And then for the garage doors, I appreciate the fact that, that the spec sheet is the spec sheet, but Sarah, I think you mentioned this, but I, I got lost somewhere along the way. Can you confirm? So there will be glass in the garage doors, right? The same, the same kind of pattern?
Yes, I'm trying to find the, see if it'll show on the side image. So my concern is just the previous pictures noted, or the previous what was there. It's, you can kind of tell, there's actually, it's like three over three fixed lights, and it's noted as just being replaced in kind. So it's the drawings.
Okay.
Show the specs. Oh, I can't go away from it, sorry. And then the way it's kind of shown right here, it has eight, so we would just need it to be shown as showing six instead of eight, and just make sure that the, the plan set, it's not included in the presentation, but the plan set had what was existing and then what was proposed, and we just want those to match, and then the spec sheet to kind of show.
And, and when we go to vote, I think that's a really important piece, and I don't want to lose that.
Correct.
So when we go to vote on the resolution, do we need to put, do we need to put in an amendment?
It's already added as a condition currently.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's it.
Couple of questions, and thank you for the presentations. I want to clarify or get some clarification on the south elevation, because, Sarah, you noted that in two different elevations, the height addition, in one it looks very prominent, and the other it looks very minimal. And so that's good, right? But I want to hear how you determine that that is not, in fact, what a person would see at street level. You know, what's the, what's the procedure or process to go through to take something that's six feet and say, oh, it's only going to be this noticeable on the street?
So with this drawing, it, it is kind of that sightline comparison, and so what you're not getting with the elevation is like you're, you're not, you can't kind of tell because it flattens everything, and so these drawings actually kind of put that into perspective, the architect, I believe, put them together kind of based off of how it is from street view, and then kind of adding those additions there on the bottom. And because the building is so far set back from Main Street, and then it's set, the additions are set back another 43 feet from the front of the building.
Right.
That, how far set back it is from it, and then standing on Main Street, that's why that kind of perspective is lessened.
Oh, no, I understand.
Okay.
How perspective changes. I want to know how you determine what the image should look like there.
Okay.
Someone had to decide, should it be this much or this much? And is that an algorithm? Is that, is it just someone eyeballing it? Like, what's the science behind that?
So if I, if I may, the lower two images, when we were working with the applicant to discuss this item, we encouraged them to draw these depictions as if they were across Main Street. So that's, so the, the elevations on the bottom are, you know, architectural renderings, and they're to scale of what you would see being on the far side of Main Street. So that's kind of where that, the, to me, the really good one is the lower right-hand side, right? You can see it a little more prominently there than you can from the left, and that really kind of gives you that image of walking down the southern side of Main Street, and then that's what that, you know, the true image would, would feel like.
And when you put together the kind of 3D modeling for this, because I realize now what you are asking, apologies, you can draw it to scale, and then you set kind of the focal point, generally it's average height of a person, and so that also is done, when it's drawn to scale, it allows you to kind of take those images to and from. So that's kind of to his point, kind of setting that person or that kind of average person across the street distance-wise. So that's how it is kind of done in terms of the modeling software. So that's how it is kind of done in terms of the modeling software.
Okay. Yes, right. Did, to the applicant, did Sarah run over with you the two conditions? And are you totally in agreement with those conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what, Sarah, what standard did you use in establishing the condition about paint color? Because we're told again and again and again that we cannot fuss with paint color.
Correct.
So what did you use to justify that condition?
So the ULUC, even outside of historic districts, has a requirement for screening equipment. Painting is also an option to screen. They provided an iteration, a previous kind of iteration in working with them, kind of had that extra kind of parapet. It wouldn't have worked in scale. So we were providing the option of painting the equipment because it helps to kind of mitigate, because paint can be used as a way of mitigating the appearance. So that is, that is at points when we can say, hey, let's paint it a color that helps mitigate the appearance. And then it also is just a general requirement within the land use code for the ULUC to allow for that painting.
Got it. And why didn't you establish a specific paint color and sort of leave it to?
I didn't establish a specific one because of some of the equipment being kind of beyond that, kind of where the addition is. And it was originally kind of metal. So that may or may not need to be a color that is specific to the building. If we would like to kind of prescribe a specific color, probably the red. I think that is within our purview to kind of, since it will have that kind of red wall behind it, it may make the most sense to say, let's go with red. So it kind of just, it'll still be visible, but it may help a little bit in not being quite as noticeable.
But how do you prevent the applicant, and I'm not in objection to any of this, let me just say that, but just to think it out, how do you prevent the applicant from having a completely different understanding of what a, a color that would reduce the power of the equipment visually? He paints it bright yellow. And you said, that's not what I meant at all. How do you reconcile that?
One way that we can do that is have them in the kind of final plan set that, because we always do a final review of the plan set to make sure any conditions are captured, et cetera. We can have them show that equipment within a specific color. So I would, I can look at that and say, this isn't actually going to do that or deter it. And so that's why, that's kind of our kind of catch is essentially before Paige and Clerk's Office signs off on it, staff reviews it and makes sure that it meets all the conditions.
Great. And is that when you will be able to ensure that the three over three glazing is done too?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have a question. So the reason for the change in elevation is due to what?
A paint booth that has got a UL rating. The new paint booths have certain requirements from a code standpoint. There are, were no available other options that were not going to have that raised ceiling. So that's what brought that elevation up. And that's why it's specific to that area. As we look on this here, that area has that three foot additional. And then to get the same parapet to cover the items that were in mechanically in that area were another three feet. That's why that's, that's six foot elevation adjustment. As well as 1.25 feet out to get the size of the paint booth and the ability to get the airflow in through there.
Open public comments per portion of public hearing now, 7:01.
No one has signed up. You have to just ask the gallery.
Okay. Does anybody have any public comments to speak on this? Do you want to speak, Pam? Okay.
Sorry, I thought that was, I thought that was, those were Bradford folks. My name is Pam Chapron and I live a block and a half from here and a few comments. First off, I just want people to know, I think most people here do not know that there used to be a projector table in front of the podium. And applicants could spread out large drawings there. And there was a camera on the ceiling that would show that and project it for the whole room. Our city needs to get that back. For the record, we should all be able in the room to see the drawings that are presented that the people have worked so hard on to show. This is a basic, again, by the way, the timer's not working, capability that the city should have. And as a member of the public, I'm going to ask for it, for the public record. So I just want to note that we used to have it. It was taken out purposely by our staff at the time and it needs to be restored. So, yeah, I appreciate the commission's discussion of this. I think you picked out all the issues that are of concern. The six feet higher sounds like there is absolutely no mitigation because the purpose, the use requires that space. And that said, it seems like the other ways of offsetting that have been taken. So I'm not sure there's a fix for it, other than what has been proposed. I agree that the screen of the equipment could very well be more distracting than the equipment itself. And then, so the color of the equipment is important. I'm thinking of Prince and Main where that metallic equipment that was put on that building on the top is very distracting from Prince Street. And I've said in public comment before, I don't understand how that got by. There have been other buildings in Littleton where the rooftop equipment was questioned. And then suddenly this shiny metal silver stuff shows up very close to the street, very visible from the street, which doesn't fit the time period. And so I appreciate your thinking about the equipment and the mitigation of its impact. And, you know, the paint color is, I think, better than the screen. I'm not the expert though. I, so what I want to say is I appreciate you bringing it up and I appreciate these folks thinking about it and solving it. So thanks for your consideration and your vote on this. Thanks.
Are there anyone, any others who would like to speak? Mickey?
The one thing that I'd like to state is the siding on the front and the sightings on both sides was changed like 20 years ago. It's been that red color. It's kind of a, kind of a, more of a darker red, not bright or anything. And the texture that it's had was at that point too, because we did everything at that time. Because Brad was alive and he and I went over everything, decided what was the best to do to the building. And that's why it's been that way for this long and nothing's changed. We're playing, basically planning on putting it back to the same structure. And it is right now on the front end, looks right just like it did. And we'll be finishing the side to make sure it looks identical. So there's not really a big deal there. So I'd ask, it ought to be at least brought up.
Any others who would like to speak? Okay, we will be closing the public comment portion of this public hearing at 7:06 PM. I would like to call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the project.
Second?
Discussion? And then call for a vote? Do you want to discuss something?
First you discuss.
Yeah, I, I had my questions answered. I think it's a pretty straightforward project. There, there are a handful of changes with the elevation, but I don't think that they're, they're so big that they get in the way of us approving the project. Well, and I think the other thing to consider is that setback. I mean, compared to everything else on Main Street, that's, you know, a crazy big setback with parking and, you know, all kinds of stuff in the front. And that is not changing in this. So I think that should be noted also.
Before we move to a vote, can I have the person who motioned say the entire motion with the conditions? Just for public record.
I have it in front of me if you want me to read it.
Could you?
Is that, can I?
You can read it and then you can say, so moved.
Okay. You ready? I move to conditionally approve HPC Resolution 01-2025, approving the certificate of appropriateness for 2659 West Main Street with the following conditions. Number one, the existing elevations need to accurately depict the removed garage doors and visually show that the proposed doors are in kind replacements on the proposed elevations and material specifications sheet. Number two, paint the mechanical equipment a color that will further reduce their appearance.
So moved.
Can you read second?
Second?
Call for a vote? This one? You should be.
The vote is five in favor. The motion carries unanimously. Sorry, the motion carries.
Now we are moving on. Yeah? Okay. HPC Resolution 02-2025, condition approval of certificate of appropriateness for building located at 2600 West Main Street. Staff presents.
Yeah, right, sir. If we could have just one minute, we can kind of allow some of the drawings to just be packed up and kind of move just before I start right quick. You're totally great. Just wanted to give a quick pause before I start. Okay, we can move on to the next item, which is for 2600 West Main Street to modify previously approved storefront windows. So this is 2600 West Main Street, previously known as Penny Robbins Building. Also, I think it's been previously brought forward as the Murphy Variety. And so this top right has the full building. We are specifically looking at the portion that is along Curtis, the, in that image below, kind of where that green door is and where the X is. So again, just kind of going over the process for approval. We did notice it and then the board has the final determination, kind of proposed changes, criteria and the recommendation. A little bit of background on this actually, before I move on. This has received previous COAs to remove the, the first one was done 2023 to remove the, the mid-century kind of additions that are on it. And so this is a modification to previously approved COAs. They've had two others, one to approve the various storefront options. And then a third administrative one that was done in the winter to kind of modify a couple of the storefronts or add a couple storefronts within the courtyard and an alleyway change. They were minimally visible from the right of way and on, not on primary facade. So it was able to be handled administratively. And so this change, again, is to that previously approved storefronts. It will be removing two of the storefronts and replacing one portion with a brick wall inset that has a mural or mural replaced on it and then a single storefront door to remain. This is the previously approved COA. It's the two storefronts that are there in the red box. This is what is going to be proposed. This is primarily due to structural issues with the building in that portion of the wall and potentially accommodate future tenant. There's a stairwell kind of right on the other side of the, the brick wall kind of going down into a basement that is causing structural concerns for the wall and potential collapse. So the kind of mitigation is to provide a solid wall and kind of that brick inset with the mural. The door that is remaining is actually the historic opening, what was previously there. That majority of this portion of the facade was historically blank, as you saw in the pictures as well. And then here's a 3D rendering with, for the mural. This is not the final design of the mural. And I do want to just kind of reiterate, for the approval tonight, you are approving the inclusion of the mural, but not the content. Staff will review the mural to make sure that it doesn't constitute signage. But due to kind of First Amendment legislation, we don't, we will not like kind of dictate the content of the mural, just the inclusion of the mural. That could be an option. No. So for the approval criteria, we did find that it met all of the criteria for the historic district as well as the ULUC requirements in terms of a mural being a blank wall treatment to kind of create a little bit more of a sense of place and identity for a building and to kind of break up, sorry, break up the kind of blank wall feel and the kind of change in rhythm that that would involve. So staff is proposing approval, but with conditions. And the conditions are related to the mural, essentially that it cannot be physically incorporated or implanted into the building in such a way that it could physically distort or destroy it. So essentially it needs to be a painted on mural. And then that the, another note be added, that it will be acknowledged and agreed to, that it will be maintained and preserved and updated regularly as kind of as needed. As we know, brick does have to be kind of continuously painted. So we will make sure, so it's to make sure that the mural stays in good and workmanlike condition. So that is all I've got.
That's all? Yeah? Applicant?
Chair of dealings.
Hello, hello. Okay. Hi, I'm Brett Murphy, owner of this property. Want to give a little bit more clarification on, on that blank, blank wall. We, on the original COA, we put windows down there because we were not, not allowed to take the facade off to find out what we were working with. So we were making some projections. When the facade came down and we started doing some demolition on the inside to get this re-structural, looking at everything that we're looking at on the interior, we found out there is a secondary staircase that goes down on this side of the wall right here that was dug out in the 60s, we believe. And then that wall actually does not have a window. So there's no window currently. So you can see there is an old window that would have been before the 50s. And then when they dug out that, the basement, I believe they, they infilled it for structural reasons. And then you've got columns, you can kind of see the top of it. But on inside of the wall, if you're in the interior, there's columns that go down. And as soon as we started talking to structural window, window guys, framers, they were talking about the, the transfer load on those columns when you've removed the bricks, especially with all of the brick falling out from underneath. The, the likelihood of a collapse on that wall was pretty high because of the condition of, of the interior of the wall and the foundation underneath. So they were all also very not wanting to put a, it was very risky to put a, a window in that spot as well. So a lot easier to protect the building from collapsing and. So a lot easier to protect the building from collapsing and make it more robust and correct some, some issues from construction from the 50s that was, we believe was like a hand dug out basement entrance. So that little, little extra clarification on that.
Questions?
I have some questions.
Okay.
I visited this site again today too, and I have some questions. The elevation that you just showed, I guess that would be Curtis Street side?
Correct.
The detailed brick cornice work on the top, what'll happen to that?
We're still gonna be doing what is in the original COA at the, at the, at the top of, of that, so that's, that remains the same.
So and, and on Main Street side, I, I noticed that the entire facade is, is basically particle board. That is, that's, the original cornice is not behind that anymore. There's nothing behind that anymore?
No. So that's again, one of, one of those issues with the, the process of, of making projections without being able to take the facade off, is when we took the facade down, the brick was gone. So whenever someone put that mansard roof off, on, that was previously hung there, who knows why, they took all the brick off and framed and then re-hung the mansard. That was a condition that I don't think any of us were expecting. That was very surprising. So the brick was removed probably in the 50s or 60s. Couldn't tell you why.
Now, will we get to see the final side of the building, the mural that they're putting up? Will we, will we get to see that?
No, sir. We, the approval here will be just for the inclusion of the mural, not the content of it. So it will be approved kind of through staff, how we do our normal, kind of normal practice for murals. And we're really just checking to make sure that it doesn't include building signage. We don't really even dictate the content as well.
So we don't get to see it?
No, sir.
Okay. I, I really have to make a comment. I realize that this project has been, you know, approved several times. I think the overall design I'm not a fan of. I, I don't see the relevance to the historic district. I would have liked to seen brick. Most of the structures in and around the area are brick. And it, it just doesn't seem like it's, to me, a fitting design for that location. I realize I'm one person on the board, but that's my opinion.
Thanks for your opinion.
And the stucco inclusion was previously approved under a previous COA. So it was, it has gone through that process. There were two options, just as kind of clarification, just.
Well, that's, that's another issue that I'd like to take up, I guess maybe with planning on this two option thing. I think when reviewing historic projects like this, there shouldn't be several options. We should stick with the original design of the buildings. There's, there's things that are proposed on that, on the building that were not on the existing building at all. And again, this is my personal opinion, but I, I'm not a big fan.
Are you a fan of the condition it's in now and has been in? No?
What do you mean, condition it's in?
The condition it's currently in and the condition it's been in since the 80s, are you a fan of that? A vacant building since the 90s, vacant building since the 80s, mansard roof, that's not true to the historic?
Well, I'm a fan of what was underneath the mansard roof.
The, there is no brick underneath, so you're a fan of framing?
So when you took the mansard roof down, there was nothing behind?
Correct, that's what I said. So you're a fan of that?
Well, I was assuming that underneath that was the drawings that we saw.
And I clarified, I already clarified that that's not there. So I'm, I'm curious, when you're saying you're not a fan of it and you're a fan of what was there?
I'm not a fan of the overall design.
Okay, sounds good. Just, I'm just trying to clarify what you're a fan of.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just have a couple.
It's gonna be nice.
Absolutely. Let's see. Oh, the applicant's narrative, at least by my reading, focused on the fact that you want to put a kitchen there as the reason why you didn't want a glass window front.
That's an additional reason why.
Okay.
Functionality of the space.
Okay. It seemed to be like the primary reason.
That, that, the primary reason is because of the structural.
Mentioned at all tonight.
The, well, thank you for asking, now we can talk about it. The primary reason is structural reasons and transfer loads, right? And then the secondary reason is the functionality piece of if you want a, a bar or a kitchen in there, they don't want a fishbowl.
Of course.
They have to back a house, they have to have, there, there's functional, functionality pieces to this.
Right. And then the reason you want a mural rather than some sort of decorative brick or something else is what? Because I feel like, because of the First Amendment issues around murals, the Historic Preservation Commission has to approve the COA with this big question mark about the mural. You only have so much authority to approve or allow. It just is this big question mark. What do they want to do there? And this has nothing to do with you, sir. This has to do with just losing control over a major visual element in a historic district. So I'm wondering why, why a mural and all of the risks that brings along?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll.
Could, could we have said, no mural, do something else?
Well, right now it says I can't have a, a blank 15 feet of blank space. That's, that's the reason why. Sorry, you go ahead.
Precisely, that, that is the reason why. So the, the code discusses in downtown portions of buildings, spans of, of sidewalls of buildings that have to have some visual interest. And in this case, it's no more than 15 feet. So in, in staff's review of this, we felt that by keeping the door in the same place, having the wall still similar to where, to what the current condition is, that one of the potential preferred treatments, because there are a number of preferred, or a number of treatments in the code, one of them is a mural. You know, in working with the applicant, we, staff felt that the mural was one of the few items that would be appropriate for the site because oftentimes a lot of the other treatments extend into the right of way, which is a challenge on, on something that is, you know, on the property line.
Are there other treatments that don't extend into the right of way? That, that could be considered theoretically?
There are a couple that are very low profile, but they still would encroach to a degree. One of them was like a landscape trellis type of a environment. Another was like a decorative panel. So the, the mural was pretty much the only one that was truly flush.
Got it. Thanks.
Brett?
Yes.
I am new to the commission and I know this has gone through several iterations. I'm curious as far as being the owner and the progress of this going on, a little bit, if it's not too onerous, to give us a little bit of a recap to, to bring us up to speed?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking the question. Yeah, so bought the prop, started talking with the Randall family in 2001. Bought it from them with the intention of revitalizing it. And during that process, there was a couple small tenants in there, so I took an extra nine months before I even started the process, helped them re-tenant and go into other spaces. Then I started the process of trying to figure out how we design this, found out that we can't pull back any of the layers until we, until we get approval on projection, projections of what's underneath. And then, so we used designs based on old photos. One old photo that I found and provided, then none of, none other ones existed. And then as we started doing the, that took another year or so to get to that spot, took it all down, then we were surprised to find that there was no brick and no windows in many places. And now we're back here again. So now it's 2025 and we still have a shell of a building because it is a, not a dried-in building and space, so you don't want to do construction on a site that people can just basically walk through some tarp to get in. Many homeless encampments have been in there. We've been broken to five times in the last 60 days. The list goes on.
With, with thinking about that history and then up until now, what is, what is the timeline for your completion?
Well, if, if we can get, moving forward, we're hoping that we can get this done in the next 12 months.
Yeah, okay.
So, but, so that will be from the time of purchase to the time of five, five years to start this from when we purchased it, to save it, to enrich small businesses. That's why I, I kind of don't appreciate someone's personal opinion on what I'm doing with my building. And I am going to be feisty about that when, when we're getting comments that are outside of the scope of what we're talking about here today.
Five years, okay, thank you so much.
I've got a question. Thank you again for the presentation. Can you refresh my memory and the commission's memory? So the, the area that we're talking about faces Curtis Street is, and it's just to the right of what's now essentially an alley, right? Or a partial alley?
It's a courtyard entrance. It's actually, I'm creating it a courtyard, it was a parking lot and a junkyard parking lot to be, to be more accurate.
If, can you help us refresh my memory?
Absolutely.
So, so this essentially, when you acquired the property, it was really one building and that, I remember that was a surprise to us. Can you kind of remind us, did it share a roof or?
Absolutely. So it's a, it's a U-shaped building, all under one, it's one legal description. There were some demising walls in there. However, the entire building on the Curtis side was essentially vacant. They were renting it to a family member for a yoga studio practice. The back of it had been vacant since the early 2000s. The 2630 address up there used to be the lamplighter, it'd been vacant since around 1991. The next unit over had been vacant for around 20 years. The other one had been, the next one down vacant since 1983. And then the next three spaces were rented by Penny Robbins Dance Wear.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that what you're?
Yep, that's, that's exactly right. So then a follow-up question, and I think I remember renting skis here in high school.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Nope, that's, you got it.
Yeah.
There's ski rentals there.
Yep. So the, the area that we're talking about right now, just looking at the picture, is, is it where the, the X's are?
Yeah.
Correct. It'd be where that third X to the, to the left.
So, so right now there are no windows?
Correct, there's no windows and we still are bringing additional windows down, we're just not bringing them all the way down. And where that door is to the right-hand side, where we're wanting to eliminate the adding of the window, we wouldn't have put that in the original design had we known there wasn't a window there.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And we didn't know that the stairs.
Sure.
There's a second set of stairs that dropped right there that had been covered.
Yep.
And then there's another set of stairs that they cut in at the front of Main Street. And so then once we opened that up, started opening up the walls, we found out the condition because that mansard roof has had probably water running behind it for 40, 50 years.
That, that, I'll save the rest for discussion. Thank you.
I have a question about this mural thing that's happening and about however many feet because like just looking at this, that is way more feet than what we were talking about previously. So why is this being required on this situation?
So this is a standard from the update to the ULUC. And so it is, with the new work, we kind of have to marry the new code and guidelines. So it's kind of fitting both of those together. Also, in general, the kind of blank wall would likely have not, without a mural, that kind of rip, sorry, rhythm of having storefronts to blank wall to door would not have fit as well with standard. So it meets both our zoning code as well as kind of providing a little bit more interest and rhythm than what would have been there if it was just a purely solid blank wall, if that kind of makes sense. It would kind of fit a little bit better in terms of both guidelines and the just kind of land use code.
I, I, I hear what you're saying.
I hear what you're saying when you're talking about that. I think that it just, it feels, I get the idea that you're going for, but based off of the pictures with the murals, I think it stands out more with the mural on it rather than it just being a blank wall. It's almost less noticeable if it's blank, whereas if we draw something on it, it's going to call more attention to this space, in my opinion. And I don't think that that's a good fit.
I have a question about that. So the, the mural was one of three options and I'm, I'm a little stuck on that. This has been a cost for Brett for five years rather than a generator of any kind of income? Is that even, is that cost prohibitive? Like, are we taking into consideration any kind of burden on asking for a mural rather than the other options as far as?
Or time?
Time and affordability? Could, could we?
I mean, a, a blank wall would be more ac, I mean, it would be cleaner, it would be, would bring less attention, it would be cleaner, it'd be more accurate to historic, but those are the guidelines we're having to do. If I, if I didn't have to do a mural and it could just be a blank wall, we'd be happy to do that. I, I find that to be more historic looking anyways, because I, I agree with Kalina that a mural of any kind there does definitely bring more attention. I think you can do it beautifully, but it is touchy.
So you didn't bring the mural idea to us? The mural idea came from staff?
The, the mural idea comes from regulations that staff has to address.
Well, options.
Yes.
One of which is a mural.
One of which is a mural.
But you didn't come saying, I want to do a mural. That's really helpful.
Yes. So if, if there was an option to vote for no mural there, I would be, I would be tickled.
Can we make that an option?
I'm also happy with doing a mural too, and I will do something very, very neat and tasteful and beautiful. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna mar my property with something that.
Yeah, or is that beyond our scope as a?
Well, I just don't want to waste more time with this. He's been in, trying to get this done for so long, like I just don't think we should be throwing roadblocks up now. And I think his building in that picture looks a lot better than the one on the previous slide, so I think.
Thank you.
If. It's a 15 feet threshold that you're, that is in the code that we need to tackle. So go to one of the slides that shows either the three X's or Brett's design.
Can we put those next to each other?
So.
And I, I think this depiction looks a little bit more, it's, it's trying to show the space, but I don't think it's a super accurate depiction of what it will look like, even though it's a blank.
I'm just trying to get a sense of, are we six inches over the 15-foot threshold? Are we several feet over the 15-foot threshold? I think it really matters. If we're just marginally over it and our solution is a mural that it doesn't sound like anybody's eager to see, there's got to be a better solution.
Well, if I can, if I may, give you some more information, because I went around, because I was curious about this. And on Main Street, there are zero properties, except for, well, there's one property on Main Street, Grand Station, that meets the 15 feet, no blank space between the 15 feet. There's, there's one.
Meaning that are other 15-foot spans?
Every single other property has more than 15 feet spans on Main Street.
Because they were all pre-change to the code?
Correct.
Right.
So in, 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 in the name of being to code, to be accurate with historic, I would be actually the only, or the second one only doing that. So I, I actually don't agree with the code per se, but I mean, I have to do what I've got to do and that's why I'm here, that's why I'm here five, five years later, because I have to jump through the hoops to do something beautiful to enrich the community. And I also want to remind you, I am chopping this all up into small pieces to enrich small businesses, non-credited tenants, not Starbucks, and bringing in local community. I'm using a local architect, I'm using local contractors for everything. I'm, I'm doing this for my community and what I'm doing, nobody else would do. I've, I've done reiterations as I've heard the community and the public needs.
As a note for this commission, if the commission were to remove the condition that there was a mural, you know, whether it's 16 feet, whether it's 15.001, this commission, if approved without a mural. you know, whether it's 16 feet, whether it's 15.001, this commission, if approved without a mural, would be, as mentioned, be setting a precedent that the commissioner, the commissioners are not approving in accordance with our code. And so, you know.
Is it just Littleton's code?
It is. It is just a change that was made to our ULUC. I'm not sure at what point the change was made, but it is, the threshold is 15 feet.
And I will tell you, I will make the commitment that I will do a nice mural. I'm not going to do something. It is going to be beautiful. It will be a, I will make it something because I'm not going to do this. What, am I spending $6 million renovating this building? I'm not going to destroy it with a silly mural.
If, Chair, may I address the commission? Thank you. So, the ULUC was, you know, adopted in October of 20, October 28th of 2001. And that is the document that currently requires it. So, when we do encounter, you know, change of facade, that, that's the code that we have to reference. So, if the commission feels that the mural or that you would like to provide options to the applicant, you could change that condition to indicate that a blank wall treatment would need to be installed in that location. That would give the applicant the more options than just the mural. However, at this point in time, since it is a ULUC code requirement, the relief for that would be, actually be a variance through AAC. So, you know, as I mentioned, you could make that condition a little lighter to still fulfill the, the need of the code and allow for the applicant to choose based on those items. You know, they, the applicant would be allowed to converse with the city in regards to a potential encroachment and a license agreement for that encroachment, as long as we had enough sidewalk space. But that is something that, that staff would, would be able to work out.
How much more time would that take him to like, get all of that done?
So, yeah, so our recommendation in, in this was that it would have to be in place before the first CO, right? So, this can still, like, the, the construction can continue. We would just have, before a CO is issued though, there would either need to be that blank wall treatment on the wall, whatever option it is, or a variance successfully acquired. One of the two.
Like, he could put a directory for all of the businesses he's allowing in there and that would still count?
That might be.
That would be signage, I believe, but.
So, a follow-up question then for, for staff. If, if we decide, I'm, I'm undecided on whether or not we leave this as is or propose alternatives. If we were to propose, you know, leaving, the, leaving options open for the, the blank wall treatment, would that need to come back then to the commission to store preservation?
Our proposal would be no because it's meeting the, the ULUC.
And Chair, if I may, if it is a blank wall treatment that's chosen, an option that's chosen that does encroach into the right-of-way, as Jared mentioned, it would require a license agreement with the city, which, you know, I don't necessarily know the timing of it. We do have our standard license agreements, but it would be probably a few weeks to a month out before that would be signed.
And, and I can help you guys with this. I'm, I'm not going to be doing, that's a more expensive, that's a more expensive fix that has more risk and people hanging on it. And that's when we get into the, you know, I, I want it to be, I want it to be subtle. Like, I either want it to be a blank wall that just looks beautiful and it's a flowing project, or I'm doing a mural that has some type of, you know, desire for some geo-tagging that people want to take a picture in front of and it helps the, helps the city and area. But I have a lot of businesses in there, so it's going to be fairly, it will probably likely be fairly neutral because I don't want it to look like it's anything like highlighting a specific business. It can't be signage. There's lots of limitations and, like I said, my project is going to be tasteful and I'm doing this out of necessity of getting this project moving forward. Every hiccup in the road going over murals and blank walls is a bit ludicrous, in my opinion. And I think it gets in the way of what historic preservation should be, which is revitalizing, saving a building. I've got a building that's been vacant since the 80s and 90s, trickled with issues, tarp over windows, homeless encampments. Like, let's get this rolling forward. Let's do some, you know, that, that's why I'm here, trying to get this done. I'm not trying to do something out of the box, just to do it out of the box.
Question for staff. So, blank wall treatment is the umbrella term for addressing the 15-foot issue, correct? And so, there are several solutions under blank wall treatment, mural being one, lattice work and landscape, et cetera, et cetera. So, if we amended the condition to be blank wall treatment, the applicant could still do a mural, as long as in coordination with you. But the applicant, if he didn't want to do a mural, could negotiate with you guys for a different blank wall treatment. But either way, we don't have the power to say, "No mural." Is that correct?
You would not have the power to say, "No blank wall treatment." You would.
We have that power.
You have the, you have the power to amend it to say, "Any blank wall treatment," but not "No blank wall treatment."
No, I, that's not my question. No mural.
Well.
Do we have the power to, and, and I'm not saying I want to do this. I'm just trying to get our options clear. Do we have the power to say, "Staff and applicant, go figure out a solution, whatever works for you, as long as it's not a mural?" Is there a?
I, my recommendation, if, if you so choose to, to provide the full suite of options to the applicant, would be to indicate that abiding by the UFL land use code regarding blank wall treatments. And that would therefore allow him to pick from that suite of options rather than be pigeonholed into one.
But he could still pick the mural?
Yeah.
Right. So, the answer to my question is no. We cannot.
You cannot limit a mural. And if I'm understanding as well with Jason's question, thank you for that question. We can't, it's, it's either all the options or, or a nut, a different.
What's your preference in those two?
I, I, like I said, I, I want to get this job moving forward. I want to have a beautiful project and, and done. And I don't want to get caught up on murals and things like that when I've got bigger fish.
But we have to, we have to make a decision. So, what's your preference?
A mural, a mural will be fine. I will do a very beautiful mural.
So, so, so the, the proposal as written is a mural?
Yes, yes.
If we approve that, that's the fastest.
And I, I will do a very, I will do, I know there's always taste and preference, as we've seen tonight. I will do something that I feel like is a very tasteful representation of my, for my community and my building, maybe even Nettie.
Um, let's open it for public comments. I don't know. She.
State the time.
Oh, 7:45 PM.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
Pam?
It's all of them that already spoke at the first one. Yes.
I'm Pam Chubb, I'm a block and a half from here. So, you folks, you read in on my concern. Murals are not authentic to this period of our downtown historic district. They don't belong. So, the fact that Steph is using the code as a reason is shocking to me. There's got to be an option for a blank, blank wall, a brick wall. And, you know, if you look at the brick treatment on other buildings in the city, there are maybe some brick treatments that could be flat. They don't require anything to come out from the wall. It's the wall itself. You look at the brick walls here and they are beautiful. You should never paint brick. I learned that from this, this body. You don't paint brick because you can't recover from it. And the brick wall is authentic to the period. The mural is not. I mean, staff, I would challenge you to come up with a solution that the wall will be as it is. And don't clutter it up with other stuff. Let the applicant build just the wall and move on. And we'll have a more authentic historic place on an important street and location in Littleton. I grew up here. I remember on Halloween, we used to be able to go down and we would paint with paint that had soap in it on the windows of that building. I think I painted one of those windows on that building. If there, you know, I don't think a huge window is an option. What about a small window with some white bricks around it like are on Prince and Main? There's got to be other options that are cheap, that are structurally sound, that move the project along and that are authentic to the period. Our code sucks. That code is terrible. I have said it before. It should be revised now. I complained about it to planning commission. I do not, this is not adequate code. And I already said, historic preservation was promised to be added to that code and this city never did. And that is a violation of my right and everybody else's right in this room. I mean, we have a right for, to demand that the city do what it says it should do to fix the problems in a code that was rushed through and was based on bad data and a poor process. So, anyway, I urge you to not, tell staff to find a solution that's a plain wall with maybe some little bit of brick decoration and move on. Don't put a mural here and let the applicant move on with a nice wall. Thanks.
Any others who would like to speak? Get up on the mic.
State your name and district, please.
Michael Kemp. I forgot about him. I, I agree. The same thing. I, I can't agree with Pam anymore than that is, is that she is, that is totally reading the historic value of that building. I think, I think he's trying to make it look historically correct and I think that mural is just going to muddy it up and kind of look ugly. It's not something that should be in Littleton. And I'm not opposed to it necessarily, but it's really his building and, and it's something that, that I think his building looks beautiful. It doesn't need that, that, kind of a monstrosity, actually. I mean, you want that picture on the side of a building downtown Littleton? Really? I mean, this is just, it's such a silly discussion to be having and that has to be changed. I'm absolutely in agreement with Pam and I think this gentleman should be able to build his building immediately. He's been holding too long.
May I speak?
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Close the public hearing and then he can speak.
Okay. I'm going to close the public comments, or the public hearing. And.
Do you want Brett to speak?
After you state the time.
Oh, at 7:50 PM. Brett, would you like to speak?
Brett Murphy again, owner of the building. And I'm also certainly trying not muddy up the water. I think we have a, a problem, a problem here and it's very, it, it shouldn't be something that we're, we're sitting here stewing over. It's going to come up again. And if it doesn't, then this is kind of a, a silly thing. So, if, if it doesn't muddy up the water, I'd like to move my, my property forward. If there is an option, because I think what we do as a community is when we find issues, we try to solve them. And if we've got a property in front of us that we can solve them, which still allows me to move the property forward, a mural, if I have to do that route, would be one of the last things I do. And so, if there is an opportunity to say yes to the mural and the blanket thing, while at the same time, there can be a proposal to remove that 15-foot wall portion because it's, it's just unnecessary. And then I would have the option to not do it. Or do it because we don't want to come back here and do it again. But my thing would be, I would not do it. I would leave a blank wall. I don't know, and then you could fix something that's in the system.
The 15, it's, the 15-foot wall thing is not us.
Oh, I know. But I have to present this to you because of that rule. I'm, I'm here because of the rule. So, I don't know if that's something that can be, we can use this as an option to help the system. If, I don't want it to slow my project down, but if we can use it, I'm here for it. I'm, I'm here for the community. Thank you.
Call for a discussion?
If I may, Senior Planner Dozenberry did some research just now. There is a blank wall treatment option that does allow for patterned brick. Now, that would not be the standard soldier course. It would be patterned. So, and this is something we haven't had a chance to chat with the applicant on. So, my recommendation, and this, in my opinion, would not slow the applicant down, would be to just state blank wall treatment and we would go to the code and make sure he complied with the code and that would not preclude mural. So, that would be my recommendation.
Does the applicant want that?
Probably talk to the microphone. I, I think as long as it doesn't limit me and it gives me options and then we can, and we can sort through it and, and come up with a resolution, I think we're all wanting to, then that would be absolutely acceptable.
And it won't slow him down anymore?
We would have a slight plan revision, depending on, on what, you know, the applicant ultimately chose that complied with the code. But at the same time, if I'm not mistaken, you still have a permit to move forward with the other items.
Yes.
We would just finalize the documentation on that portion of the wall.
Yes, as long as I have the options to do, do them all, I would like to do right by what everyone's sentiment here is. And I think that would be a, a good option for our community to solve, solve something that I don't think anyone's happy about.
Okay.
Thank you for, thank you for that suggestion.
Question for staff. Why wouldn't we, we're going to have to amend the motion anyway, right?
Don't have to.
Well, it sounds like we might, right?
I, I recommend.
Why wouldn't we amend the mo, since there was excitement about, what's the name of that solution?
Two-tone brick.
Patterned brick.
Patterned brick.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we at least consider the option of amending the motion for patterned brick? Is that an option?
It, it is. As I mentioned, I, I was trying to provide a greater suite of options to the applicant who probably hasn't had a chance to contemplate what the pattern would be.
But getting back to my previous question, it would be a way for the commission to prevent a mural?
That is fair.
Okay. Call for a motion? Somebody?
I have the motion. I'm ready to read the motion or make the motion. But first, a question. So, if, if we decide that we want to amend the motion to, to open up, to replace, do we even say mural in here?
Okay, what are we going to say?
So, would we need to put in, how, how would we move for this?
We need to make a main motion and then someone would make an amendment.
Okay, thank you. I will, I will make a motion. I move to approve HPC Resolution 02-2025, approving the certificate of appropriateness for 2600 West Main Street with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall provide a note on the final plan set that the mural design cannot be incorporated or implanted into the building in such a manner as to physically distort or destroy the building. And number two, the applicant shall provide a note on the final plan set acknowledging and agreeing to maintain and preserving the mural with periodic cleaning, repairs and repainting as needed in order that the mural design remains in good and workmanlike condition.
Second.
I have a question. When we were being told that if we didn't approve this, we would be going against the code or what you were saying, what does that mean? Like, if we just say no, are we like rebels or are we like?
Correct. So, if the commissioners decided that they did not want to follow the blank treatment provision that's currently within the ULUC and essentially did away with staff's recommendation on any type of option, any type of blank wall treatment option, including the mural, and just allowed that blank wall to remain, then that would be contrary to our code. You'd be setting a precedent. So, you could potentially, I mean, it's, it's, I don't want to get into the weeds of it because it is a legal discussion, but you would be setting a precedent. because it is a legal discussion, but you would be setting a precedent for follow, for decisions and applications that come after this one.
Or like that code being just removed because now Main Street adheres to it?
That would require an amendment, and we would have to go through a completely separate process to have that provision of the code amended, including public input, outreach, recommendation from the planning commission, recommendation from this commissioner, this commission, as well as approval by our city council for final language on any revisions or the complete removal of the blank wall treatment provisions.
I, I get what you're saying on that. So like, if we were to say no, he could proceed, and then we would be filing this motion with the city, or would it be one joint thing? Because I don't know if the code is necessary.
I'm not sure what you mean by filing a motion with the city.
Well, I was, like, you're saying we would set a precedent.
Correct.
And then there would have to be changes that go from there, or people...
Not necessarily, yeah.
So, it sounds to me like the commission needs to decide, if we want to amend the current motion, and if so, how to amend it. Do we need discussion about that before someone takes the next step?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I think we could have discussion around the, what's been proposed, the resolution, and then talk about whether or not we agree that what staff has proposed by, that, that we amend the resolution to include, or to replace the word mural with blank wall treatment. And, and we, we could do that. Or we could do more than that, which is what you were just talking about.
I do like that often.
Well, I mean, in between those two, in between the sort of very broad, general blank wall treatment and setting precedent that could cause all sorts of ripple effects, which I also don't want to partake in, is the brick pattern, patterned brick solution.
Right, or, right. So, so that, that could be a solution.
Prevents the mural.
Yeah, but there's a suite of solutions, right? And we, we aren't voting on what that is. We're voting on opening the door for one of these.
We can vote for the patterned brick.
Okay, well...
Well, I think...
No, we can. I mean, that's what Jared said.
We can, yeah, you'd have to persuade us to do that.
Right. Oh, and I, I'm just saying, if the, the, the community, at least what we heard tonight, is, under no circumstances should there be a mural there. So I feel like we have some degree of responsibility to hear that, and the solution for no mural is to come up with a specific direction. Blank wall treatment leaves open the possibility that applicant and staff will stay on mural.
Well, yeah, blank, blank wall treatment opens up the possibility that, that this building in a historic district, which has come to us as a COA, or which, you know, has come to us to, to talk about and make decisions about, that we would, we surrender some kind of control over, over what ends up there. Yeah. Okay. I, I have some thoughts on just the, the proposal in general, the project in general. I, I understand, so when we voted, when we, the initial COA came to us, we, we, we were in agreement, we, obviously, we approved the COA, with the understanding that there were a lot of unknowns about this building. And so we, I'm not surprised that, that you've come back to us, because there were so many unknowns here. And, and, you know, I'm a little disappointed that, oh, you know, the, on the Main Street side, the brick wasn't there, but we knew it was a possibility when we approved it. The other important thing to note is, this, this building is one of several downtown that, that has its historic, its historic roots in more than one era. So when it was originally constructed as the brick building with the beautiful facade and brickwork, and the, the big plate windows, that was one era. But then, in the 1950s and 60s, it had the mansard roof put on. That has value, too, on its own. I mean, as a, as a commission, we've, we've discussed, you know, previously, kind of how we treat buildings that, that do span two different eras. But my point is, I think having that blank wall, whether it's a mural, or brick, or whatever, would still be true to either its first era or its later era with the mural. So from a, I mean, before we had the, the discussion around is a mural appropriate or not, I, I came into this thinking, yeah, you know, a mural is not so dissimilar. Yes, it's dissimilar to what we see downtown. We all have opinions, including me, about murals, not a big fan, in that particular location. But speaking from a historical appropriateness standpoint, it doesn't stick out to me as much as, as it could, because of the, the later significance of the building. That's really all I have to say. Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing. Because that side is on Curtis, because it's, it's near the area that's kind of the courtyard, it's a little bit of a transitional era anyway, area anyway, I'm more inclined, if, if this was on Main Street, my feelings would be a lot stronger than they are having this facade on Curtis. Now I'm done.
Okay. So the mural could technically be drawn to look exactly like the side of the building? So like, maybe...
Like they could paint brick.
Yeah, and sign it. I mean, so are there rules around that? Because that feels like, with looking at the overall composition of these renderings, and understanding what the audience has said and the owner, maybe it's not so concerning what the mural would end up being, since we have reference points.
But that's not up to us, though.
So I, I think there's a lot of concern over if there's a mural, it doesn't seem like people are enjoying the risks that might be involved with what that could end up looking like. And wanting to potentially isolate away from that and give options other than that. But I would be curious about saying, like, it's, it's, any of the solutions for the, for the options could be done incredibly poorly. But looking at the renderings, my inclination would be to think that whichever option the applicant was given, he would do in good taste, and in line with the design that he's already done. So I'm not, I don't favor or disfavor any one of those options because of seeing what the likelihood would be, that it would be in good faith to what he's already done. Yeah. Good. Are we good? Okay.
We're calling for a vote?
Well, we, we, we need to decide if we're going to amend the motion.
Okay.
So I would move to amend the motion to replace mural with the generic umbrella blank wall treatment.
Correct. Okay. And we need a second.
Oh, I second.
Are, are we still discussing, though? Because that, that option would be one that I would be interested in.
All you got to do is vote for it.
Yeah. Are we voting?
So, so we just amended the main, the, we've amended the initial motion.
I moved to make it that.
Oh, you did? Yes. Okay, so now we're calling a vote on...
Who seconded? The amendment.
Maybe no one will say anything.
Okay, zip it.
Commissioner Ritter, did you second?
I second. Can we call for a vote now?
Now you vote on the amendment.
On the amendment.
So you're voting to amend the original amendment, I mean, the original motion to say, instead of mural, blank wall treatment?
Correct. So reject it?
Reject it.
Do we all vote again?
Vote again.
There you go.
The vote is four in favor with Commissioner Honi voting no. The motion carries.
And that just changes the original motion?
Correct. You will still have to vote on the main motion.
So now we have to vote on the motion. Okay. Now we will be...
Do you need to discuss more? Do you need to discuss more?
Do you guys need to discuss? No, we're ready to vote.
Okay. The vote is four in favor with Commissioner Honi voting no. The motion car, the motion as amended carries.
Cool. Are we done? Okay, so now, comments and reports? Ask for reports. Can I have everybody's report?
Yeah, so just a couple of updates. We are having the joint city council and HPC study session on the 25th. I've reached out to a couple of people to kind of help present. If you also have any interest, please, we can do a quick convo on it if you would like to, but it's just kind of meant to be a discussion between HPC and city council about priorities. We'll be highlighting the upcoming survey plan, which we have under contract and are working on, and we'll be bringing the kind of first kickoff meeting with y'all in March during the study session. And then we'll also be looking at kind of a couple of the other items in our work program, participation in the Littleton Boulevard subarea plan, as well as the potential for code amendments or updates to the process. So that was kind, I think, the three kind of bigger items that we had on the work program, and we did a provide, we will be providing the full work program, so we can discuss any of those items as well with council. That is all I've got for the moment.
Will there be an agenda sent out in advance?
Yes, similar to kind of HPC meetings as well. We'll have something sent out.
Do you have anything, Atassi? I do not, thank you. Well, she stole one of mine. February 25th is the joint study session with council, and we will be having a study session on March 17th. And unless there's more business, you'll see your packet come out the week before.
Cool. Okay, I adjourned this meeting at, what?
You didn't ask us, and I have two quick things to say.
I don't want to. Okay. What do you want?
I just want to share with the commission that our chair, Paige, and I went to an all-day Saturday boot camp, basically for commissioners, hosted by the National Association of Historic Commissions. It was very, very informative. It was a really good use of time. And I have all the slides, so if anyone wants to see exactly what was presented to us, I'm happy to distribute that.
Yeah, is that something that the city could distribute, like, are you...
Wendy, if I give it to you, do you want to distribute to the rest of the commissioners, or can I do that myself?
I'd be happy to.
Is that the better way to go?
For you.
Okay, that's what we'll do. And then just a real quick question for either city attorney or city clerk. When we're in public comment, not associated with a specific motion, but just the open public comment, are we allowed to engage with the commenter? Questions, requests for clarifications? Is there any norm or ordinance or anything that governs that? Because frequently, it comes up, you have done this, you haven't done that, and I would wonder if there's a way to engage.
No discussion, no engagement on any, on anything that's not a part of the agenda. If it is a part of a public hearing that's occurring, then, you know, usually you don't have discussion during the public comment portion, but after the fact. During the commissioner's own discussion, or, you know, questions to staff, or questions to this table, you have the ability to respond to and discuss whatever was brought up during public hearing. But the first one that we...
The first one?
Right. We are not able to.
Okay.
You do have the ability to go ahead and talk with staff after the fact about maybe any concerns that you've heard, or send them an email, like, hey, you know, I heard this. Can we have this addressed, or discuss it, or put it as a topic on the agenda for the next meeting or study session? That's always possible.
Great, thank you.
I adjourned this meeting at 8:12 PM. Thanks. Have a good night.[1765.58][1765.58][music]